All right, I'm going to call the order, the Lake Mills City Council meeting of October 20th. And let's go with the roll call, please, Misty.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Diane?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you all, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and states of America, to the republic which stands one nation, on my behalf, individed, force, and.
Oh, I could hear. Good. Now, okay. All right, brings us to item four, correction and or approval of the City Council Budget Work Session of September 29th and the regular meeting minutes of October 6, 2020. Is there any reason to separate these?
Yes.
Okay.
I was at the first one.
You were at the 29th?
I was absent for the work session.
Oh, you were absent. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, we'll take that one back. Can we get that one corrected, Misty, and brought back?
For the September 28th minutes, it does indicate that Ms. Schmidt was absent. I think we just need to do them separately so that she can abstain opposed to having to vote on both of them. Is that correct, Ms. Schmidt?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
So they're good as they're written. It shows that you were absent.
Correct. I just can't vote on it. Well, we can't vote on them together.
Got it. I see what you're saying. Never mind. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, so let's vote on the September 29th work session as written. Go ahead and call the vote. Oh, sorry, right?
Thank you.
We need a motion, sorry.
Move to a pro.
Is there a second?
Second.
They need to turn their mics on.
I hear them.
It was faint, but what I picked up was Diane was the motion and Mr. Fritsch, the second.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Now we can call the vote.
Diane?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mr. Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Abstain.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the October 6th minutes. Do we have a motion of adoption as written? We're having some sound issues, though. Hold on a second. Let's try this again. Do we have a motion of adoption for the October 6, 2020 minutes as written? Move by Diane, second. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fritsch. Call the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mr. Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Motion passed 5-0.
Hey, we got it all in time. All right, item five correspondence. Let's start with Ms. Schmidt.
I don't believe I have any recently.
Okay. Diane? Do you have any correspondence? Nothing?
Nothing.
I received a letter from Mr. Lookie on Pinnacle. He has gone around and put these letters in different mailboxes addressing the development on the south end of town. He was just concerned he wants more transparent to communicate with him about how this is going. He had a petition also included with that. And he did have a couple of things come over and just follow up because these were in the mailboxes. And an email from Mr. Stanley just asking about Sandy Beach Road and all that. He was just concerned about the.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fritsch?
And the only thing I have, it's okay if I mention this, okay. I did receive a letter from Steve Fields. He has sold his house and he'll be moving out of his district. So by the end of November, we're going to look at the possibility of that we will fill the seat. And there's going to be instructions coming soon on how we're going to fill this seat. So there will be an open council position that will have to be filled before an election happens. That's all I had. All right, questions and public comment? The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, which we don't have any tonight, so we shouldn't have to worry about it. Your public comments can also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address of starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. Is there anybody online who wants to make a comment first?
No, nobody.
All right, folks that are in the audience, feel free to step up to the podium and, well, come on up here and make your comments. Okay. They want you back there. Sorry.
Give the mic to the one on your left, Dan. I can't hear you.
The mic is already on, Dan.
On the iPad. Should I turn off mine so I don't get feedback?
In your ears, yes. Just take those off.
Oh, take them off.
I'm sorry.
The mic is on, Dan.
There's also a sheet to sign on the podium. There's a sheet to sign.
Yeah, I'm signed in. Okay. Good evening. My name is Jane Schumach. I live at 356 Sandy Beach Road, and I've been before this council in the past expressing concerns regarding the redevelopment of Sandy Beach Road and the Motel Home Park. Since then, I've learned that many residents in the community have similar questions and concerns which remain unanswered by this council. You likely already know that Hope Ozteig and I circulated a petition among the community regarding these concerns. To date, we have 351 signatures that were presented to the court this evening. For the record, I'd like to read the petition to you now. To the Lake Mills City Manager, Lake Mills City Council, and Lake Mills Park Department. We, the undersigned taxpaying citizens of the Lake Mills community, hereby ask the Lake Mills City Manager, Lake Mills City Council, and the Lake Mills Park Department to call a moratorium on all further construction and redevelopment of Sandy Beach Park until a master plan can be developed and shared among all community members. We, the undersigned taxpaying citizens of the Lake Mills community, demand a public review of all the following. Established print and/or architectural or engineering design or plans for Sandy Beach Park and Sandy Beach Road drawn to scale. A disclosure of future municipal actions planned for Sandy Beach Park and Sandy Beach Road. Plans drawn to scale and policies for the relocation, reconstruction of the boat launch and storage. Plans for proposed boat launch fees and parking fees along with an accounting of these items in the city budget. A study of the impacts this launch will have on an already overcrowded Rock Lake and the integrity of its natural resources. Facts and findings from the archaeological study undertaken by the Commonwealth in 2019 and 2020. Proposed needs and uses for the building that overtook this recently demolished restaurant. Plans for the relocation, development, and/or changes to the Mobile Home Park. Any other proposed possible changes to Sandy Beach Park and Sandy Beach Road areas. In addition, a series of public discussions must be held to give all community members an opportunity to provide input into the design, reconstruction, and safety of the redevelopment. We demand that our interests, concerns, and suggestions be taken into account to ensure our continued enjoyment of this area. So tonight, we have presented the petition to you for your consideration. In closing, we would appreciate knowing what you plan to do next, how you plan to do it, and really, how can we get meaningful public input into this very significant project? I'm going to thank you for your consideration and turn the floor over to Hope.
Good evening, guys. My name is Hope Ozteig. I do serve as the town chairman of the town of Lake Mills, but tonight I am speaking to you as a public citizen of this community. I felt earlier in the spring that we really needed to do something to input and ask for public involvement for the redevelopment of Sandy Beach and the area surrounding it. I did not see many avenues of which to give public input. I did not see many different venues that we could be speaking about the wealth and well-being of Rock Lake as related to the redevelopment of Sandy Beach. I faithfully attended many of the beginning meetings that were held on the redevelopment of Sandy Beach, and I did not feel that any of the public comment that was made at those meetings was taken seriously or put into consideration as far as the development of the plans was concerned by the consultants. I have some very real concerns about what is planned or the lack of what is being planned for Sandy Beach. My first point would be that I think we really need to look at an extensive master planning project. There are so many facets to this project that I think we really need to look at and have some guidance, maybe from an outside source or from someone within who can lead us through a public involvement and master planning process. I was at one time involved in a master planning of Court Park. There was a great deal of controversy about the reservation of buildings at that time. The master plan has guided all of the development of Court Park and has worked as a living document for the last 20 years of that park, and I feel that's the kind of document we need for Sandy Beach. One of the concerns I have is about the boat launch. I'm mostly concerned fiscally about the boat launch. We in the town of Lake Mills have several boat launches, and we segregate that money that comes from those boat launch fees and use that money extensively and singly for work that needs to be done on Rock Lake. Work like management of the buoy system, other projects that have come up. Those are the things that we spend our boat launch money on, and as I see your city budget, it has no accounting for those fees that come from boat launch. And if you recall, the history of those boat launches is that there was never any fee collected. The Rock Lake Improvement Association put together a system, purchased the boxes, and began that system, which is feathering our coffers, and that money really needs, I feel, to be designated to do good upon Rock Lake and in those areas. It should not be segregated completely for boat launch maintenance or for park maintenance. One of the big things that really goes on at Sandy Beach that causes a lot of trouble is the parking on Sandy Beach Road. And I want you guys to look at that and address that. In a recent study of boats and trailers that were upon the waters of Rock Lake over the Fourth of July, there were 65 boats and trailers parked alone on Sandy Beach Road. This is unacceptable. We need to regulate that parking, and you need to be cognizant of the fact that there are still 12 properties that belong in the town of Lake Mills at the end of Sandy Beach Road, and this is a community, and we need to work together. It's very exciting to me that we have this ongoing geological study, and I would love to see that information presented.
We have a time.
I have more comments that I would like to make, but they are summed up in the petition. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. And the only answer I'm going to give to that is make sure you read the article, my response to your petition, because I think you've got the cart ahead of the horse a little bit. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Rosicky. I think the gentleman up there spoke about my husband's petition already that he sent out. We are concerned about the development that is next to Topol's. So it used to be forest landscaping, and we see the plans, and there is no area in there that is for water runoff. So we were wondering where in the position of this property is supposed to be collected for blacktop runoff areas. There is none in your plans. That's one point. The second point we have heard is that the runoff is supposed to be turned into onto the golf course. Well, that's my backyard. So that really disturbs me because you are displacing thousands of wildlife, animals, raccoons, opossums, whatever, animals, deer, fox, that are living in that area, turkeys. All of those animals are going to have to relocate somewhere, somewhere down the trail, and I am going to lose all that wildlife that I now enjoy. I have lived there for 22 years, and I've enjoyed it for 22 years, and now you're ripping that away from me because you're going to steamball your plans and try to take away part of the golf course and make it into a sterile pond for runoff for this new development. Very disturbing to me. I also have sent this petition around to Pinnacle Drive, and they are very disturbed. The landowners there are very disturbed that you are doing these things to the south end of town when we are under a covenant where single-family homes and condos are the likelihood of all of the people that are there, and now you're trying to shove in apartment buildings into this area. We're not very happy about that, as you can see by the number of petitions that will be collected. We want to know where you're bringing in revenue for the town instead of spending all this money. We want to know where the businesses are that are paying for all of this TIF money that you're giving out. We want to know where the people are going to be working that are coming in to live in all of these areas. We also want to know what effect you think this is going to have on Rock Lake because all of these added people, as you can tell, Pinnacle Drive and Sandy Beach Road get packed in the summertime, and there's really no place for more people to be packed into that small little area of the lake. So we're very concerned about this area. We want to know what you're going to do to address these things. So we're looking forward to hear your response. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right. Seeing nobody else, we're going to close. Questions and public comment? We're going to move on to the city manager's report.
Question. Do we have copies that have names of people on?
No, and that's.
Oh, well, we need.
That was my concern too, because.
Our petition doesn't show anybody's name. Oh, that's good. Thank you. That's what I was asking.
I have the originals in my office that were given to me at break of tonight's meeting.
And we have to verify which ones are actually property owners in the city.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Yes, all I had on the agenda was the general fund checkbook register and the city ban financial support letter, which is always part of the budget and is again this year. So are there any questions that you have on anything?
Thanks, Stephen.
Yep.
That moves us on to item eight, discussion decision on development agreement.
There we go.
You guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. City Council business, eight, discussion decision on development agreement, 110 South Main Street, Topol Holdings LLC. Can we get that motion title read?
City Council motion 20-10-2-1, authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement with Silverstone Holdings LLC for the redevelopment by Topol Holdings LLC of 1110 South Main Street.
Okay. To somebody like a, make a motion of adoption, or motion 20-10-2-1?
I'll second.
Move by Mr. Fritsch, seconded by Mr. Fields. All right. So this agreement is a little different. So there is pro forma data out there, and it's showing what the total increment should be by the end of 2039. Of 1.6 million. So in the developer's agreement, if you notice, they're asking for $600,000 in reimbursements, but they're not really reimbursers. So they're asking for this money upfront, which the city will have to take out on loan. And then as the development builds increment, that pro forma data that's showing what the increment is, would come back to the city. So it's a lot different than the last one where the petitioners actually waited for the increment to get reimbursed for the dollars. So with the $1.6 million increment, we would still be sitting okay by borrowing the money and paying the financing on that. So that's what's in front of us.
The first thing you have to remember, Mike, is that the, in the agreement, that any shortfall on the increment is guaranteed by the developer.
Good point. That's a good point. So, yeah, if there is a shortfall in increment, that has to be made up by the developer. So there is no losing proposition truly for us as far as being covered, but it is a different way of giving that money out than we have done, we've discussed in the past few months.
Right. Historically, this is the way we've done it. So if you looked at our agreements with Walgreens or JJB or Lake Mills Market, they would be consistent with this. Slightly different in the fact that this one has three payments, one starting at the beginning of the project, one in sort of in the middle of the project, and then one at the end of the project, which would require some financing arrangements by us. A preliminary financing arrangement that we would have to take care of this fall. So the way the developer's agreement spells it out, so many days after a building permit is drawn, it might take a little bit longer than that because we have to come back to the council and actually have permission to borrow that money. And then probably what we would do is look at it next year when we actually do the final payment of $300,000 and incorporate that into a bond, all of it. So we do a short-term note for the first two and then incorporate those all into a $600,000 note. The financing, the increment here, the assessed value we used is 1.6 million. The actual cost of the building is probably around two and a half, but on commercial buildings, we know that we're not going to get the full assessed value. So we went pretty conservative. We could have gone around two to 1.8, but we picked 1.6. It's not the lowest we could have gone, but it's a pretty good estimate that does a real good job of giving us the information that we need to know. Actually, this is, the other difference between this one and the other two is that this one gets 100% of their increment essentially, whereas the other two got 50% or less. So, you know, the question is, is how is this paid for? Well, essentially, what the TID does is take the change in the difference between the increment prior to the TID and then the increment after the new development, and that, those tax dollars go to the TID. So it's not generated by any other means other than the historic process. So it doesn't take increased taxes on anybody. It doesn't have to have new jobs. It doesn't have to have anything like that. All it has to have is a change in the assessed value between what was there when the TID was started and what the new building is going to be. That's where the revenue was generated. The process here is pretty standard. We, in fact, this is the historical method for running TID projects, at least for us, in that it's a pay goal, but we actually do the borrowing and then their TID pays us, but they guarantee that increment. So it's considered a revenue bond, a pay goal. The other ones, they borrow all the money, the TID pays them back annually, whatever increment comes in, until that level of payback you gave them is reached. So it's quite a bit different. They, and Dan will probably want to talk about this somewhat, but they guarantee, or they have to meet certain standards that everybody has to meet when they develop in the city. So they have stormwater issues they have to deal with. They have sidewalk and parking lot and all those types of issues that are all spelled out in the developer's agreement, and Dan has all those in there. So, Dan, you want to talk to it at all?
Sure. This is Dan. First, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to discuss. But I think that's, the last point Steve was making is very, very important. The developer in this situation is obligated to comply with all city standards, with all ordinances, state statutes regarding the development itself. The structure of this TID is, or this agreement within the TID and the reimbursement or the pay in front is, it's definitely workable. It's something that's been practiced, tried, and true. The pro forma that we do have provides a benchmark of where we anticipate being. It is a little bit, there's an aspect of speculation here, but the payments are structured such that if the developer doesn't follow through, they're not receiving the payments anyway. The goal absolutely is to get the development to. the anticipated assessed value and then to create the increment off of that. So I think those are really the key points. The development itself will be built to city standards and that all of the information that we have with regard to the anticipated valuation of the product does justify the expenditure at this point.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? That hasn't
I do.
Go ahead, Vicki.
This is for Dan. What is the mechanism by which they guarantee the payment in the event there's not enough increment?
The development agreement. It's stated as such within the terms.
But, you know, where does it come from if they don't, if we haven't created, if they haven't created enough increment and they're obligated to pay us, where does it come from?
Well, I
Is it like a perfect guarantee or?
There will be financial guarantee or escrow funds for improvements that are considered public. There is no request for an escrow or anything with regard to the development as, as a whole. The guarantee is that they're going to build out to specifications and create that increment. If they fail to do that, they will not receive the payments on schedule. And then within the document, there are guarantees in place that the developer is making that says that they will comply with those terms as the, the development occurs for the life of the development. Other than that, I mean, we're not securing a lien on the property. The property is owned by the development. So if the LLC went bust, that is the asset that we could go to. We haven't requested like personal guarantees from the principals of the LLC at this time. So to answer your question, the development agreement is really the only structure for surety in this circumstance.
Anything else?
Did you say that they will be posting a financial guarantee?
I said that, I said that we had I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
What kind of financial guarantee are they posting? Like a bond or a letter of credit or something?
Only for public improvements. We haven't requested anything with regard to the private improvements on the, the property. We did not contemplate that.
And, and our financial contribution, is it basically to cover the public improvements?
No, not in this circumstance.
So we don't have special assessment or any other mechanism for recovering?
If there are public improvements that could be specially assessed, they did agree to sign a waiver. But no, there, there is no surety in place other than for potential public improvements, which quite frankly, this project will be light on.
Any recommendations, Vicki, that you'd like to see?
Well, it's my understanding that we don't have all of the information yet that we need in order to complete the document. Is there a reason we can't table this until we have that information?
At this point, what we're waiting on is kind of the final plans for development and a more conclusive list of estimated costs that would be subject to TID reimbursement, the, the basis of the ask. The motion is structured such that the entering into the development agreement would be contingent upon finalizing the document, securing all of that information. But to your point, could you table this? You certainly could if that's the, what the council deems appropriate.
We, we still have to make the one change, which is how the financing is done in comparison to what's in there. I, I think that the cap in it covers almost everything. The one question that is legitimate is, is there some way to guarantee a, to put up a financial guarantee? A letter of credit?
We could request a, a personal guarantee or if you wanted a letter, letter of credit. I don't know exactly what you'd want that letter of credit to cover.
Well, it would be, yeah.
The valuation of the, the TID funds or some, some amount thereof. With, so Steve, the first comment you made was basically cleaning up the financing aspect of it. You were just talking about the, the, the timing, correct?
Correct.
Payment within certain amount of time?
Right. So
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Yeah, your original said that it would be done within 10 days of, of drawing a building permit.
That was the first one.
Yeah, it's actually going to be the first council meeting after the drawing of the building permit. Because the council has to approve the financing. The, the second one is similar, has to be similar, that it won't occur until after the council actually approves the drawing of the finance, financing. The, the other one is, is a letter of credit. The, the problem that we've looked at here is, is that you know, this is a project that we've long tried to make sure that we move forward. And we have put a lot more investment into this one than other ones and we've, we've covered a lot of things that we have not historically covered, but are allowed by TID to get this project to move forward. And it would really, it might be a significant hardship on these people to be able to provide something other than a personal guarantee. So, you know, is, how do we want to structure that?
I have a question. Could, if we need money on us, can we put it on the tax bill like we do in other cases? Can we put anything that comes up on their taxes, you know, like we do in other cases?
Not necessarily resulting just from this document. You could put special assessments, failure to pay, utility charges, special use charges onto the tax roll. And that, there's nothing really contemplated at this time that would accommodate any of those categories.
A special charge would probably be the most appropriate in my opinion. I, I also want to make some comments that we knew when we started this project and both the other two developments that are, actually the other three developments that are occurring down there were kind of based on making sure this project happened. So that's why we kept them at 50%. This is so that if there was some issue in this one, we could shift some money over in the interim. So you've got about, you know, we have about a million dollars in the Tyranida Ridge one and they're going to generate $13 million increment. You have $450,000 in the 13 24 one and, and they're going to generate almost $1.2 million or at least $1.1 million increment. And we're projecting with the other project that covers those two areas. You know, the 1204 and the 1117, that you should be able to again be gaining another $500,000 worth of increment over and above what's being proposed to provide them in the project plan. So I think the combination of that much increment, other than what's being developed on the Topol site and a, a special charge guarantee, you know, signing off on a special charge. What do you think, Vicki? Is that satisfactory?
I don't know.
I don't, you know, the only other you know, like what we did with the other two companies was that where we did this type of financing, which would have been the Lake Mills Market project and then the Walgreens one is they provided a personal guarantee, but they also provided a information on their assets and both of them exceeded $50 million. I, I don't think that this is going to happen in this case.
So what you're saying is that altogether within this particular TIF district, even if this one is slower to generate the increment than what perhaps you were wanting to do, that we would still be covered within the TIF district to allow this one to kind of catch up?
Yes. And that's if we couldn't get payment from the developer, because the, the developers are supposed to make, make up the difference by the TID agreement. So it, it essentially says if you're 10, if we're $10,000 short on your payment, you have to come up with the $10,000. But let's say for some reason they were so financially strapped, they couldn't do it. The other projects in the TID would be generating enough increment to cover that $10,000.
So the taxpayers or, or the TIF district itself would remain protected anyway?
It would remain a solvent TID district. Based on that one project. Now, if all of them went to heck, you know, we might have some trouble. We historically have not. TID number four is going to be close, but as a project overall, we haven't had any problems with that. And this one is about as conservative as we've been in the overall aspect of the projects within the TID district, although this one is a high-risk one for us.
You said that on the other ones that we valued it at 50%. Is this one being valued at 50% or is it at 100%?
It's almost 100%. It is a conservative estimate, but you know, I'm not gonna I don't want to play games with, with it. It's 100% at the estimate we provided with the pro forma that was in the, on the agenda. Which has been a conversation we've had from the beginning because this was an important project to flip all the other projects on the south side.
Has any of our financial consultants or planners or anybody weighed in on, on this particular project?
Yes, all of them have. And they're all within the scope of understanding, the same understanding that I have and that I've just explained to you. They're comfortable with the overall project. They looked at the assessed value as being relatively conservative. And the items that we put forward for reimbursement were within the scope of the project plan. But they, they again realized that it's outside our norm. But in order to make the south side projects work, this was a very important project.
Okay, so you're probably equating it to like the Walgreens one. Why that one was as important as it was.
You have to turn it to be able to make all the other ones kind of fall into place.
Okay. I understand.
Okay. Are there any other questions? And did you have any recommendations at all, Vicki?
Well, I don't know that tabling it for two weeks is going to make any difference. I'm not sure what it is in terms of information that we're waiting for to complete the agreement.
Yeah.
All the information would be related to how much of the $600,000 they're actually going to qualify for. And it'll be spelled out in the document. So if they can't come up with $600,000, they're not going to get $600,000. They have to provide us with legitimate estimates of what the expenses are. And then they, you know, at the end, they don't get the money unless they've justified that they've hit those expenses.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Been in Lake Mills a long time. And since the days of the Dairy Queen, this area has gone downhill. And anything I've heard from the people in Lake Mills is can't you do something to make the south end look as good as the north end and the other sides? And this is part of that. So I think the general public wants to see this cleaned up and this is how we have to do it.
Thank you. Anybody else? One wants.
I would just, just like to say, these people have been around for a long time. And
Longer than we have.
Yes. And so I guess maybe a little consideration.
Okay.
Yes, in order.
I, I do want to make sure though that, that incorporated within any motion is the understanding that we're going to have to change the, the financing deal so that it doesn't say at the draw, 10 days after the drawing of a permit. It's going to have to, you understand and that this agreement will actually incorporate something that says the first council meeting after the drawing of the permit.
So what I have written in my notes, Steve, and I was going to amendment to that effect was within 10 days of the first council meeting after those benchmarks, the building permit, then the foundations, and then basically substantial completion. Are you agreeable to that?
I'm agreeable to that. I just wanted to make sure the council understands that we're headed in that direction. They're going to see this again before we, we actually borrow the money.
I would like to so move what Dan just read.
So what, what you want to do is amend the, the developer's agreement. I don't know that, let's just go this direction. This is absolutely appropriate. So what you're recommending is an amendment to the development agreement, requesting a change in the, the structure, the payment mechanism to show 10 days after, within 10 days of the first council meeting after those individual benchmarks. So that's in section O, down to the payment mechanism. There's three benchmarks. And we're going to request to amend that language to within 10 days of the building permit, within 10 days of completion of the foundations, within 10 days of substantial completion. Or from that, from that to, excuse me, to within 10 days of the first council meeting following those benchmarks. Does that make sense? I know that was convoluted and I went the wrong way first.
That would be what I want to move. That's my message.
So that's the amendment from 10 days to after, after the council meeting, within 10 days of that council meeting.
So I'm moving to amend, as you just stated.
Got it. So with that amendment being stated, do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Fritsch. Let's call the vote on the amendment.
Mr. Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. So we have it, an amendment to the actual developer's agreement. And that brings up motion 20-10-2-1, which we already have a motion at the second. Is there any other discussion before we call? Okay, let's call the vote on motion 20-10-2-1.
As amended, as amended.
We amended the developer's agreement.
Not the motion.
Oh.
We're good. Okay, go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Mr. Fields?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mr. Fritsch?
Hi.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right. I think that's going to do great things for the south end of town along with the different condos, apartments, things like that down there. I think it's going to make it a place that people want to visit, live and nice for this community. and nice for this community. All right, item AB, resolution 20-37. Can I get that read please?
Resolution 20-37, authorizing the city manager to sign a jurisdictional transfer agreement extending city of Lake Mills jurisdiction on State Road 89 to the southern boundary of the city of Lake Mills.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion of adoption for resolution 20-37?
So moved. Bye, Diane.
Do we have a second? I will second it.
Just a clarification, is this sort of like housekeeping?
Well, no. We're going to take some of the county's jurisdiction on the south end of town. So we're going to take over that portion.
Okay, but that makes sense since we own the road down there, right?
Well, that's what we're doing. We're taking over that portion of the road.
Yeah, okay.
Who would like to speak on the staff about this?
I'll start and then I'll let Dan finish, but
Can I ask Steve to put on his camera? I don't get it. All I see is the SW.
I will share my screen here for a minute.
Thank you.
Can you see that up there now?
Yeah, we can see that.
Okay, so what this does is it extends our jurisdiction from where it ends there, just past county highway, down to the concrete plain. And technically, I would have liked to have gone all the way down to Unsavvy Road because it gives our guys a better place to turn around and come back at. But based on, you know, annexation and underlying control, this was the spot that we wanted to go to. State highway deal is a better deal than the county highway deal. So if you take over a county highway, you get minimal state aids, but you never get the package where the state comes in and finances a street rebuild like we got on North Main Street or South Main Street. So we get about $21,000 a year from the state to maintain what we currently have. This will add about $2,000, a little over. And then when we go to rebuild it, the state will participate in that like they did in the current one. So it'll be an 80/20 essentially. The, one of the items that we have is a tap grant coming up, and it's easier to extend the tap grant, to utilize the tap grant to build sidewalks and put curving things on if the street is city jurisdiction. So that helps. It also allows us to do the driveway permitting, the sewer and water permitting without having to go through state jurisdiction. We do have to provide them information on it, but we don't have to get their approval. We still have to get DNR permission for water and sewer. But as far as that goes, they kind of relinquish some of that control to us as far as being able to do certain improvements and control certain zoning and issues of that type. So we felt that it was important to go ahead and request jurisdictional control of this. The state was more than willing to pass it on to us, as was the county. So we feel comfortable in recommending that you do this. The Public Works Board did recommend that we do this. So Dan, do you have anything you want to add on it?
Only that, excuse me, only that we don't have the actual agreement in place at this point for you to review. So if you want this to come back and actually look at that agreement. But it will be typical, only stated what our goals here are. And we have had initial conversations with the DOT with regard to this transaction. So it's looking like a sure thing.
So what is the preference of the council members? Would you like to wait to see the document before we move forward on this?
What I would like is to have the documents when we get them included with the city manager's report, so that we see everything better.
So what I'm asking of it, would you like to table this? Have, bring it back when all the documents are ready?
I couldn't understand. What?
Would you like to table this?
I don't have, I don't have a problem acting on it today. But it's like it's brought back in the city manager's report when we get everything finalized.
Okay.
So now do we, I made a motion, right? Yes, so we have a motion and a second. Okay.
Yep. Vicky, thoughts?
Well, my experience of working with state agencies is they give you the agreement and you take it or leave it, so it doesn't much matter. We'll get what we get.
Okay. Anybody else? All votes.
Mr. Fields?
Steve?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Item 8C, ordinance 1217, the 2021 general on budget first reading. Could you read the title and the, you know what I mean, the totals?
Ordinance 2021 General Government Budget Tax and Levy Ordinance. An ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operations of the general government and debt service funds of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the year 2021. The city council of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does as our Dana follows. Section one, there is hereby appropriated other receipts of the city of Lake Mills for the year 2021, including monies received from the general property tax levy to the various purposes specified in the budget presented herewith for the purposes therein stated the following amounts. Summary of adopted general government budget for 2021. The total revenue for the 2020 budget and 2020 estimate, $5,294,400. The total revenues for 2021 proposed, $5,492,700, for a 3.1% change. 2020 budget and 2020 estimate total expenditures, $5,294,400. 2021 proposed total expenditures, $5,492,700, 3.1% change. The 2021 debt service. The 2020 budget and 2020 estimate total expenses, $1,788,400. The 2021 proposed total expenses, $2,028,500, for a 13.43% change. 2020 budget and 2020 estimate total revenues, $1,788,400. 2021 proposed total revenue, $2,028,500, 13.43% change. The 2020 budget and 2020 estimate grand total, $4,291,200. The 2021 proposed grand total, $4,536,100, for 5.71% change. Section two, there is hereby levied a tax of $2,682,000 for all purposes and $1,854,100 for debt service on all taxable property within the city of Lake Mills as returned by the assessor in the year 2020 for the uses and purposes set forth in said budget. Section three, the city treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to spread this tax on the current tax roll of the city of Lake Mills. Section four, this ordinance will take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and publication.
Okay.
I have a point of information.
Yep, go ahead.
When I got in this afternoon, this evening, I had this document about the employee. Is that for this item or is it for a closed session?
Closed session. Okay, are there any other comments on this? Any public comments, whatever the case is? It doesn't sound like it, so this is the first reading. We'll move on to the second.
Actually, Mike, we need to finalize this on the November meeting, the first meeting in November because the county requires us to have it submitted before our second meeting. So we'd like at the next meeting to be able to move to the third reading if possible.
We could do both of those at the same time.
Yep.
Next meeting.
Yep.
And that's going to be the same.
Or would it be better to do this, the first and second tonight? So it's posted for the public that it's a final reading at the next meeting.
What would make sense?
I would prefer that.
I think so too.
I'd like to move to suspend the reading and move to the second reading at tonight's meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to move this to the second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fritsch. You call the vote please.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion pass four one.
I would like to make some comments at this point on that, as long as it's moved to the second reading. The, both the expenses and the debt have changed. And I don't know if you noticed that. The expenses were lowered slightly and the debt was modified. So there's $174,400 of miscellaneous revenue applied to the debt. And the debt amount still remains the same, but the amount that we're levying is reduced to $1,854,100. And that's part of our negotiations with the town fire department, towns over the fire department. So that's not quite finalized yet. I'm going to meet with Hope and Larry and try and finalize that number before the, well, it will be finalized before the final meeting, but those numbers may adjust a little bit on the debt. The expenditures and revenues, we did our levy limit and our expenditure restraint calculations, and those are why those have been modified some. And so you'll note that we had to drop all those in order to be able to hit our levy limit and our expenditure restraint requirements.
Okay, so we are now moving on to the second reading. And what is required of us for the second reading right now?
Technically, I just have to read the title.
That's what I thought. Go ahead and read the title for the second reading.
Ordinance 2021 General Government Budget and Tax Levy Ordinance.
Okay, so.
And now I would go third reading at the next meeting.
Yeah, so weird. I just heard myself talking. I wasn't saying anything. It felt me off air that I didn't text him from the neck of somebody's office. Okay, so we're going to move this to the third reading, the final reading on the first meeting in November.
And that will be a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing. So those people that are listening on TV, if you want to come in, come on in.
It is a lucky night. So if you're planning to do something special that night, this is that same night.
Wow. Is that like going out to dinner?
I think so. Sort of like getting married or something.
Okay, item, shoot, my stuff here. Item 18, ordinance 1218, the 2021 capital budget first reading. Could I get you to read the title and the totals?
Ordinance 2021 Capital Budget. An ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the capital budget of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the year 2021. The city council of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does as our Dana follows. Section one, there is hereby appropriate other receipts of the city of Lake Mills for the year 2021, including monies received from the general property tax levy to the various purposes specified in the capital budget presented herewith for the purposes therein stated the following amounts. 2021 Capital Budget. 2020 Budget and 2020 Estimate Total Revenues, $2,814,500. 2021 Proposed Total Revenues, $2,315,700. 2020 Budget and 2020 Estimate Total Expenditures, $2,814,500. 2021 Proposed Total Expenditures, $2,315,700. Section two, there is hereby levied a tax of $8,000 for capital purposes on all taxable property within the city of Lake Mills as returned by the assessor in the year 2020 for the uses and purposes set forth in said budget. Section three, the city treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to spread this tax on the current tax roll of the city of Lake Mills. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and publication.
Okay, and soon we're at the same point with this one. We need to move this to the second reading tonight and then make a final on the first in November.
I would like to, I would like to move to suspend the rules and move this to the second reading tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Fritsch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fields.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Well, does Mr. Wilkie have any changes like he did on the last one?
No.
No.
Who said no?
You said no.
No, I didn't.
Misty did.
Oh, no, I, I do want to note that there are some issues here with the long-term borrowing might change based on what we hear from the auditor on the tap grant stuff, knowing that the tap grant likely isn't going to occur for another year. And so we want to see how he wants that budgeted. But that's the only issue that we have that might change between now and the final reading.
But that won't change the levy, will it?
Yeah, it'll actually, well, no, it won't change the levy. It'll change the amount of the long-term, or the, yeah, the long-term debt or the long-term borrowing, not the debt either. Although it will change it in '22. But the levy stays exactly the same.
See, the thing that just seems very strange is going from 161,000 to 8,000.
Yeah, that's, if you look at the shift in how it worked, Mike, and it has to do with the amount of debt that's being taken from the towns and shifted to the debt. It actually makes the debt lower by dropping that to eight and then using the town money to pay for the debt, which is more appropriate.
Yeah, because that's almost half a million lower. And total revenues. Well, and total expenditures too. Okay, so we have a motion to move this to the second reading. Do we have a second? You did, sorry. Misty, please call the vote.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion pass four one.
Okay, we are now on to the second reading. Go ahead and please read the title.
Ordinance 2021 Capital Budget.
Okay, unless there's any other comments, we're going to move this on to the third reading, which will be the final reading in a public hearing on the on the first meeting in November. Okay.
I would just like to say for the record that my rea- reason for doing this is that if anybody in the public is looking at the agenda and says, oh, I have next meeting to go to yet on the budget. When we already know that we are going to do this, I think we should make it as clear for the public as possible. This will show that it is a third reading, so if they have something to say, they better show up at the next meeting.
Makes sense to me. Okay. Item nine, recommendations for future agendas. Is there anything that we know of right now, Steve, besides budget readings and?
Uh, tip number eight probably.
Okay, makes sense.
Because that's at the plan commission next, next week.
Next week, yep.
Um, that's the only thing I can remember for sure. You, you have anything, Misty?
That one item that we talked about earlier involved um, application for privilege in the street.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Um, right now, we've got that other plan commission item that might happen. Other than that, nothing I can think of off the top of my head.
And we know Misty won't be here that night because she'll be at the polls.
I will not be here.
I'm assuming Betsy will be covering.
I'm hoping so. Yes, um, actually, Betsy already was prepared when she put the ordinance together. She already has her name on it, so she's planning.
She's jolly on this side.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion that we should have concern with the letter that Steve was giving about the water runoff and the planned apartments and things like that? Is there anything that we should look at and discuss or have Public Works look at for the water flow or?
Public Works will get to look at it as well as Plan Commission. So it'll, you know, first of all, it's not an apartment building. And second of all, the historic runoff has always gone that way. Look at the state ran a huge stormwater pipe out there. Uh, so those types of debates are, are, will be brought up in the uh, Public Works and the Plan Commission meeting. So yes, uh, there will be plenty of opportunity to review it and discuss what the issues are and why they're there. Uh, yeah, it, it's.
Isn't, isn't that building going to be on the other side of the, the uh, bike walking path?
Not the ones that they're looking at. They, they, they talked about the apartments, which are, are on the other side of the bike trail, on the south side of the bike trail. They're actually talking about the development on our, on the property that we sold, which is not apartments, but condos.
Condos, right, yeah. Yeah, and the covenants they have in there, yeah, does not cover anything outside of their area.
Right, the, the covenants in the ridge don't apply to anywhere else in the city. They're not relevant.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking. Okay. That's all I had. I just didn't know if we were going to be discussing that or if I was going to get the Public Works and the other committees and knowing that it is, that's, that's good.
Um, I'd like to just acknowledge um, the concern that was brought up about the animals, does that go to some committee? In the city or county or?
For what question?
The, the animals that they said are being displaced.
Um.
Who does that go to?
Public Works.
Well, Public Works isn't going to consider the, the displacement of animals and, and the displacement of animals within the municipality isn't a, isn't a, I mean, already the state's using that as a stormwater detention basin, so the way the, the stormwater gets laid out and the other questions about it are, are kind of, they're very difficult to put into a framework. As far as I know, when we, they've been using that as a stormwater detention basin for years and the animals are still there, so if you modify the stormwater detention basin, I know in Brookstone that the animals still use that all the time. The, there will be stormwater detention on both sites, so Topol's and um, in fact, all three sites, Topol's and twelve oh four and thirteen twenty-four will all have some level of stormwater detention on their sites. So.
But that is not something that we normally uh, deal with.
No, that's not, that's not a, generally, when you're within the framework of a municipality, you try and reduce the, a number of varmints moving through the area rather than increase them, so it's, you know, generally, when we get complaints, people want us to remove them, not add them. Uh, so historically, we haven't considered that. I mean, you can look at it and consider it, but making a determination uh, on the amount of, of wildlife that would continue to utilize a site is pretty subjective, particularly when it's, when it's within the framework of, you know, how much the golf course is, is actually developed or undeveloped.
Well, and the land along the bike trail is not being impacted, so, you know, they may have to move down the road a piece, but there's going to be a lot of land there for animals. Uh, I apologize for being a, displacing some of the animals. I, I like the animals too, but it's not like there's nothing left for them.
Yeah, I would say that there's still plenty left based on the golf course and, and the other uh, open areas in the, in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, would like to ma- to make one announcement. Uh, if you have not heard, uh, there is testing for COVID-nineteen at the fairgrounds this weekend, Friday and Saturday, and next weekend, Friday and Saturday. Um, I think it's until six o'clock driving, and it's at the Jefferson County Fairground.
And, Mr. Foster?
Yep.
If I can add one more item that's part of the recommendations for future agendas, I just wanted to, I missed that the um, the committee for the Rock Lake Activity Center building that will be on November third is the plan as of right now per my minutes in the last meeting.
Perfect. Again, uh, for anybody who's listening or whoever reviews this, um, not only are we looking out for that committee, but we're also working on uh, questions and public comments for future plans for the, for Sandy Pitar, things like that. So it was mentioned in our little paper, and right now, the only thing that's planned is the possibility of moving the uh, the boat launch as long as the archaeological study doesn't come up with something that would prevent us from moving forward. So any of the other plans that are out there are nothing more than speculation right now. Um, we may move on with them sometime in the future. Um, like our plan is to work with polling and other types of questionnaires to get information out there for everybody, so if you're interested in stuff like that, keep your ears open and look for that stuff in the paper or uh, it may come in email or regular mail to you. So, as it stands right now, the only plan that is potentially going to happen is to move the existing boat launch to another side of the park, and that's it. Okay.
Well, I have one thing, just to remind people, in case they didn't hear, that we are now in um, open voting uh, here at City Hall. And it's till the thirtieth, which is Friday, the thirtieth, so. I encourage anybody who wants to come vote ahead of the, the regular election to do that. Now, it started today.
Yep. Okay, item ten. Convenient a closed session pursuant to conference stats nineteen point eight-five-one. Deliberating from the HDA purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds in the business. Whenever competitive or targeting reasons require a closed session in nineteen forty-one, considering employment, motion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which governmental body has jurisdiction. These are the only things that we can discuss in closed session. Do we have a motion to move it to closed session? Mr. Fritsch, you have a second. Mr. Fields, second. Um, one last note, we will stay in closed session. And we will reconvene when we really have. So go ahead and call roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Mr. Field?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Motion pass five zero.
All right, we are now in closed session. Thank you.